Good evening, welcome to the study session of August twenty seventh. Donna, you do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Blush. Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Gilmore. Marinesco. Deputy Mayor Sherman. Councilmember Sapp. And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Donna. Tonight, Finance Director Mike Giddens has information for us about our twenty twenty five budget. Mike, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of council. A long awaited study session on the budget. So, um, City Manager, um, Mark asked me to just give you a little bit of an update on the audit. That we had an exit conference on today, so if it's okay, I'll just start with that. Um, we will be fully audited for fiscal years twenty two and twenty three in the coming weeks. They notified us. This was a federal funds audit. So on our annual financial report, we reported the federal money that we received. Primarily through that coronavirus recovery dollars that we had. We also received some other. Money for the, um, through, for the, um, designated crisis responders. Some of that money. Um, is reported because it's federal pass through. Um, we have a small amount for, through the Bureau of Justice for some bulletproof vests. So the auditor is coming in to check our expenditures related just to this federal money that we receive. So, um, this is a team effort. I just want to tell you, it's not one person doing this. Deputy Finance Director Terry Snitzer and our Grants and Budget Manager Don Chrisme, who's here in the audience. Are a huge, um, part of this as well as other finance staff. So, um, Harry is the primary one who prepares the annual financial report. That's where these dollars are reported. The auditor determines that we're above a certain level and need a single audit on this. So they came in and looked at this. They pulled some samples of what we spent money on. They asked us specifically, we had, um, when we. Initially received that coronavirus money, we'll just call it that. It was a pretty, um, a much more narrow scope that you were allowed to spend it on. It's a public agency, then it later opened up to be, which pretty much was any place where you could show you lost revenue. Um, a good governmental purpose, I'll just say that. So they were looking at, how did you say you spent this and did you spend it in that way? We had in twenty twenty three, put about a half million dollars towards, um, street maintenance and operations. So they looked. Um, at a large sampling from that. Um, I can tell you that we gave them quite a bit of data on where we had spent money. Including payroll records. They looked very thoroughly and I'm pleased to tell you, we had a clean audit, if you will. There were no issues that they had. I can't, um, express enough that it's a team effort because we're, um, you know, it's not just finances doing that. It's managers and other directors, particularly in public works, who were spending this money appropriately in a good way. So it's good to come through this. It's a very positive thing for the city whenever we get a clean audit. That we're responsible to our taxpayers who, um, give us this money. I mean, this was federal money. So it's coming from a federal source, but that's all everyone gave tax money. So that's what the exit interview was about today. Will be audited on fiscal years twenty two and twenty three, as I mentioned. They expect to kick that off next month. So that will be, um, looking at all city funds. From the general fund, through all of our enterprise funds, they'll start looking by looking at our financial statements and making sure those tie out. And everything's appropriated and they'll do some sampling. We'll know more about that when it happens. Um, they're estimating the cost of that audit to be somewhere, um, in the low fifty thousand dollar range. So, um, we do pay to be audited by the state auditor, but it's important that, um, you know, we're taking it very seriously. We're very hard to make sure we're combined in every area and it's always good to be able to report out that clean audit report. The exit conference, just so you know. I'll speak for Donna. As you're living through the audit, you feel like you're really working hard. And then the exit conference is about three minutes. Where they say, everything's good, thank you, and kind of go through that. And you're a little bit like.
It's a lot of pomp and circumstance, really, um, to check some boxes for the SAOs.
So anyway, that's what the exit conference was and, um, you know, we had a lot of money reported. I'm just going to say one point two million dollars as a percent of our budget isn't necessarily a lot, but it was money that we put towards a lot of different projects. I just mentioned the street fund. We had spent some of that money towards the Western Gateway Project. The auditors just pick a sampling of what they're going to look at. Some of the money went towards Veterans Village. Um, so the reclaim came. Well won. So a little bit of this money went to different things. They mostly focused on where the majority was spent, which was that half a million dollars. That's that. So now.
Well, I'd, I'd like to thank you and your, thank you and your staff for, you know, I've attended probably five or six out of the last seven. Asked interviews and our audits and, uh, they've always interviews. Am I out of here? Uh, that have been all great. So it's, you know, it's hard work for you and your staff to keep track of that. I know it's, uh. Been great. So thank you.
Do share your responsibility to our, our taxpayers and our taxpayers, right? So happy to be able to buy that and have that assurance from SAO that. Um, it's a job well done. Yeah, I agree, Mayor. It's great to have a, have a strong staff within the finance department, our departments, to take these seriously. Um, you know, mine, I'm going to kind of kick this off here and then, uh, I think it'll be a little bit back and forth between, between Mike and I. But, um, tonight we're going to focus on the general fund budget. Um, certainly discuss utilities, enterprise funds, but there's still some reconciliation from twenty twenty four that needs to happen. Um, and you know, these funds based on rates and, and general facility charges for operations and, and projects are. I guess a little more succinct than the general fund and I think they're, as in they're, they're specific to the functions of those, those departments. So, um, on the tenth of, of September, we're going to focus the study session on capital improvement program. So we'll dive a little bit more into that specific element within each of these funds. And, uh, we'll certainly have, I think, give the council a better understanding of projects that are leading up to some of, um, the expenditures within those departments. But we're happy to, uh, discuss that tonight. Certainly focus on, on the general fund. Um, so amongst other things tonight, we'll, we'll talk about the anticipated revenue. And projected expenditures in twenty twenty five. What we've done with, with the information we have at hand, right? Essentially what we're doing is taking a little bit of a history, where we are to date, projecting that into twenty twenty five. What we've done is we provided our departments with a baseline budget. So the twenty twenty four budget transferred over to twenty twenty five. We take all the runtime expenses away from that and ask for new requests, uh, that may add to programming. Uh, projects or just inflationary increase or, uh, or anything like that. So you'll see a list of kind of the needs within your packet. We won't go through those. Uh, I think each one specifically, but we'll highlight some of those sites. So you have a better understanding of what's, uh, come from each department. Um, I think you'll see that, uh, the requests are reasonable. We haven't seen requests that, um, are, are. Highly aspirational, if you will, or, or adding a lot of new programs just because we don't have the capacity to do that. Many of you heard and have heard, um, that, you know, we're anticipating, you know, our, our revenues, um, to slowly increase or stay fairly flat. And at a much lesser rate than our expenditures. So we need to be conscious of that moving into twenty twenty five as well. Particularly with ongoing expenses, which primarily are, you know, staffing salaries, pages and things like that. So, um, yields. As you've seen in, uh, as well in the monthly, uh, budget reports and infund balance that is, it's quite healthy at this point. Uh, we need to be conscious of how that is best used to provide services to the community and not use those for ongoing expenses the best we can. But, uh, make sure we meet council strategic goals. Again, I guess, along with that, right now, as I mentioned in the twenty twenty three budget, or excuse me. In twenty twenty three and adopting and developing twenty twenty four budget, uh, being strategic and planning and forward planning starts taking, um, a back role to daily functions. And that's a lot of what our department heads and senior staff are doing along with our line level staff. Uh, so that's a concern moving forward. You'll see that a little bit within that I did, that, uh, there's requests for, for staffing, um, administrative assistance. Patrol officers and things like that. Uh, they're not recommending a forward audit. That means that. That budget isn't able to, at least for ongoing expenses, able to, um, satisfy those surplus needs. And that means that department level directors, managers, supervisors are taking on a lot of those day-to-day functions, particularly when we have absences. Because we don't have a lot of, uh, redundant positions. Many of the positions at the City of Shelton are singular, singular employees. So if somebody is out here vacation sick, um, we still want the work to get done. We don't want to shut out somebody's backfilling, taking on, taking on those, uh, those roles. So, uh, tonight, again, open study session, hope to have as many questions, uh, from you as possible. We'll try to get you as many answers here tonight. But we'll prepare to come back to you, uh, at a later date if we need to. Um, but knowing that we are moving kind of. I don't know, it's a fast path, but it's, uh, we're, we're chugging along to a November fifth, uh, council meeting for, for public hearing adoption of the twenty five budget. And, uh, and moving forward into, let's just quickly. Going to be the end of the year, twenty twenty five, right around, so, um, in front of you is, is the proposed budget calendar. We are on target, I guess. Yeah, for, for the most part, um, moving up today as well, council study session. Uh, the first council study session, uh, plan on taking your input back to our, uh, departments, um, making adjustments that we can at that point. Refining that budget, uh, through the first week of September and that gives, uh, finance department opportunity to further package this. To a culinary vegetable can be presented to council given February. Anything else on the calendar, Mike?
No, I think, you know, we're, we're looking at a November, um, public hearing and adoption. And then probably bringing a supplemental to you for consideration on the twenty twenty four budget, simply because there's some cleanup things we have to do. We didn't want to mix those because it's confusing, I think, to public, um, as well. If we tried to adopt next years and we. Fix this year, there's just some revenue and expenditures we need to reconcile. Things happen that we don't know about when we adopt the budget. So you'll notice we plan for that similarly. So you're going to hear a lot about budget in the next four months.
Yes, we all are. Um, I thought we'd start tonight talking about the financial, financial sustainability task force recommendations. This was born back in twenty twenty three, prior to my tenure here as City Manager. Uh, we had a, uh, small group of local residents. Proprietors, um, of local businesses that assisted the city and did a thorough review of operations and the financial resources that we had available to conduct the services. I think over, the overarching, um, sentiment recommendations were that, that really, they were surprised that we could perform as many functions as we do. Sources we have available to us. Um, that is, that continues to be the case, particularly after some reductions we made after the financial state task force. Adjourned, adoption of twenty four budget. So I thought I would just go through some of these recommendations to show the council how, uh, we've really enacted some of the. Most of these recommendations to help streamline functions. We'll start at the top. Um, we had a, I think, a one million dollar, um, allocation for jail services last year. Um, that was going to come out of reserves and recommendation unless we don't, uh, continue to do that. It's ongoing expenses. So, um. We didn't realize the, the totality of, uh, of that one million dollar, uh, allocation. And that's one of the reasons why the infund balance is a little more robust than what, what we anticipated back in, uh, in twenty three. But we continue to, to monitor this because the costs don't, don't decrease, right? They're, they continue to increase. Number two on there was outsourcing divesting animal shelter and animal control functions. Uh, we went back to council, uh, about this. Um, we. The service interest in the council maintains some animal control services of some sort. This will be a discussion as we kind of get to the hand and we talk about some of these, these projects and, and programs. But, um, we, that hasn't fully, um, realized. Uh, we reached out to, with an RFQ, uh, published, what, I don't know the date. Earlier this year, right? Uh, for animal control services, we got no responses for that. Uh, BNO tax adjustment, council took action last year on that. Uh, we've continuously been updating the website, trying to add more information directly to the website. Reduce, uh, reduce some of the staff time and create efficiencies for our customers. Uh, Office of Public Defender Grant, uh, thank Judge Greer and Court Administrator Diane Smolinski for continuing to apply for these grant funds to offset costs out of municipal court. Water and sewer rates, um, council only considered those again last year in adopting rates that would make, um. Our, um, water and sewer rates or departments, um. Able to, able to provide the necessary services and operations, but also address some of the capital projects that are coming online that, um, could very well, uh, step up development. Um, we have not had the opportunity to discuss, um, the Public Safety Sales Staff in County at this point. Um, voter approved bond to be capital improvement for parks. Again, that has, that has not been something that's been provided to council. We've been discussing with council at this point. Uh, the C Street Landville, as you, we, we saw, closed that out with, uh, signed the agreement to monitor services there. Um, been quite successful receiving grant funds and, uh, moving into the second year of, of monitoring after that. It's, uh, it's on the city's dime. Again, with parks, yes, and maybe let, if there's a recommendation to, um, increase that up to, uh, the maximum seventy five cents per thousand, that would be a voter approved levy. And we have not brought that back to council either. Um, proactive code enforcement, um, this is taking some of the lights away from neighborhoods, increasing property values in Longmont. Um, with the council's commitment last year to an eighty thousand dollar abatement fund, uh, we've obviously had some success. And fourteen eleven railroad, but we've also, um, recently gone through some other abatement broad, um, hearings. And may very well see some, some total abatements or some voluntary compliance based on those actions as well. But, uh, we have a active code enforcement officer now. Uh, the grant writer position.
You missed, you missed twelve.
Did I miss twelve? Oh, and they should have government development, or sorry, um, you know, that's. There, there's two ways to go about annexation. There's, there's, there's application or the city proposed annexation. We have the, um, Olympic Heights Development Four Hundred Acres over. And it's last year, we have, uh, grading permits out for the first phase of a hundred ninety nine houses. The civil plans are in place, but we have not gone out to, um, proactively seek annexation in what might be commercial industrial areas that are, um. Better employment centers for job producers at this time. Eric. Uh, getting back to the grant writer, I am fully funded of the positions such as grant writer. Um. The one problem that we are facing right now, frankly, is we've been fairly successful in getting either grant funds or direct appropriations. And having the staff to bring some of those projects to fruition, um, has not occurred. We're dealing with some grant funds from twenty twenty one right now. And as we sit on those funds, they lose their buying power. And so we really need to be strategic in that, how we receive these funds and how we put them into practice. Uh, we recently, um, agreed with Port of Shelton that we would take on the sewer line extension on Spring Road. The port applied for the grant funds. It's obviously not on Port property. It's from the high school out to one oh one. They didn't receive the whole two point eight million dollars, I believe. Uh, it's just under a million dollars. So it can really pay for design. We've agreed to take that project on. Uh, it'll happen next year in twenty twenty five. So, um, these projects keep coming on board. We need staffing and, uh, the resources available to, to put some of this. Money into the ground and make it real. Um, so we need to be strategic. Um, outsourcing versus insourcing services. And we talked about public safety. I think you heard a report on IT not too long ago, Right System. So, uh, we've been, we've been doing that on, on a regular basis. We have, uh, a number of engineering contracts that are out. We don't have a city engine on staff now. So that some of those, um, some of those services are being provided. We also have staff that have taken on, um, some of those roles. Some stepped up to the plate, done a great job with that as well. So, uh, we're happy that that saves a little money from contracting out. But there's certain services that we just aren't capable of performing in-house. One of those is, is public safety and police. We, uh, reached out to a few communities contracted with sheriff's departments, uh, mostly King County and similar sized cities with similar sized staffing. The cost of by those services contract was more than, uh, we're committing to public safety right now. So we think we have. Essentially addressed most of those, um. Most of those recommendations in a way that we've either taken action on those or, um, fully satisfied that, uh, we're performing those functions to, uh, best of our ability. Available resources. Uh, number sixteen, reduce infrastructure divested buildings. Um, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Uh, that's specifically around the library, museum. Those are buildings on the fire station. Those are buildings that aren't, uh, that are under city ownership that are, are city services, city, city services. Um, number seventeen, that's a project that's, yeah, ongoing right now. The AD is committed to replacing, at least on Railroad Avenue, uh, streetlights to LED lights. That'll be a cost savings to the city. Uh, there's going to be some upgrades on those and a little bit of maintenance that make those look better and function better. Better lighting as well as, uh, cheaper to run. Uh, design specifications, that's been something that's been ongoing the last year and a half or so. Uh, we've, we've updated the street standards. Uh, there's sewer and water standards that are ongoing. Uh, those are. Those are dynamic processes. You don't, you don't complete those and set them on the shelf and they're, they're good forever, right? We have to continue reviewing those as best practices. There's conditions in our community that change, um, whether, you know, whether it's a certain. Elevation street, you know, whatever condition that might be. Um, so, um, these are, these specifications need to be addressed and updated on a regular basis. So that's kind of an ongoing deal. Uh, the six-year tip with impact fee levels, again, that's been addressed appropriately, um. Adopted by the council, um, city surplus land. We do have land available. Um, we, that's a broader conversation. We talked about it a little bit. Most of the property we have is not, um, readily available for development, but there is some opportunities up on, on North Thirteenth Street. So we've talked about some Harvard Avenue properties that have already been, been declared surplus. We've talked to some, um. Uh, affordable housing providers about that. There is some interest, but there's some constraints there too, and whether they, whether it's feasible for them to provide, uh, provide housing there. So we're going to continue talking about that. Um, electronic records management. We still have work to do there. Um, it's, it's a fairly big lift, um, because you are, you are backfilling and scanning all of the information. The last estimate was about a hundred fifty thousand dollar investment to that. So, um, again, uh, that's, you'll see that in that. And one of the requests in the budget, but, um, hasn't risen to the top yet. Um, setting overall fees at a level sufficiently, sufficiently recovered cost of operations. We update our fee schedule on an annual basis. We'll be bringing a fee schedule to this council by the end of the year. Again, uh, with backup on why the fees are established, such as they are, why any changes might be made. So we review those based on staff time and expenses that we have internally and how those are, um, distributed out for the projects or programs they may be associated with. Annexation to Central Mason Fire, um, you know, the Central Mason has got through two annexations in the last year and a half or two years. Um, the City of Shelton is a natural step. Um, it's just got to be right timing and what that annexation looks like. Um, we're currently collecting, um, any EMS levy and that's basically transferred to Central Mason. And then fire services are paid for out of the general fund. So Central Mason through an annexation would collect their own fees within the City of Shelton. The city would not collect. Um, those or potentially collect those for other purposes, depending on the council's desire. More needs within our Parks Department, um, the playground at Neelam Park, skate park replacement. We have a gravel parking lot up at Calan without ADA accessibility. So these are capital improvements that are ongoing and needs within the park system. Uh, again, either parking impact fees or levy lift lifts could address, could address, address those in the future. The twenty sixth, the shift staffing local partnerships, um. You know, there's just not a whole lot of capacity there. A lot of recreation programs are self-sufficient, so they pay for themselves as well. They might not be particularly some adult program, uh, that we do isn't available through the YMC or the organizations that we're filling. We're filling out like a softball league, things like that. So volleyball leagues and things like that. So we believe we have a, a value, um, to the community and quality of life. Programming that, uh, continues to be, uh, provided here through the Recreation Parks Recreation Department. Uh, the grades for customers outside the city limits, we basically have to show what there's a, um. And an additional cost to dividing the service. So for a water customer that is outside the city limits, we have to show there's an additional cost there. We have, um, been able to essentially prove that at this point. So the advance is essentially the same twenty forty fifty either way for that rate. So. Um, the SMP, the adoption park program, we've had some success with Shelton Health Connection and Shelton Rotary, uh, at, uh. Of betrayal near the park, Truca Johnson, skate park, uh, areas like that. So that's, that's a great partnership and great partnerships to build within our community. The process, um, and the investment in the tools to deliver the service. I think we'll talk about that, about that a little more, vehicles. But that's an ongoing, you know, uh, improvement process and analysis that we do throughout our departments. Is this equipment, are these tools that we really need to do our job? Um, are they necessary? Can we do it better in another way? Um, as we implement technology, hopefully create efficiencies. And that's one thing we talked about in developing this budget and the requests. Um, are these requests going to create efficiencies for our departments? They're going to be strategic, strategic goals of public safety or maintaining our assets. And so we, we review those on a regular basis, um, throughout the department says, then finance itself. Um, sales tax options available to cities. Uh, we've talked a little about affordable housing sales tax and that's really other than like, uh. Um, public facilities district or convention center district that are available for sales tax options. So, um. The subcommittee talked about that a little bit. So that's all I'm able to talk about kind of, as we get through some of the. Some of the long-term, well, I guess, or short-term and long-term decisions. Uh, fully fund vehicle replacement again. We'll touch on that, the, the options between, uh, our existing equipment, um, replacement program, which is fun to purchase. Once or, uh, maybe a, uh, uh, enterprise, uh, fleet management system, which you're paying over time, basically for these vehicles. Um, so you reduce that upfront cost and you can, um, you can provide a better fleet for their police department. Um, the planner position, I don't know, that, uh, that's kind of, that, that can be a mentioned in development. If, uh, you don't get the, get the development plans off of, off of the table, that's certainly something we need to look at as we see some of it developing on the horizon. One of the heights, once the Olympic Ridge for some reason, um, and Coffee Creek, um, if they, if they kind of get any time soon. So. Any, any questions, Eric? Um, okay. You know, there's a bunch of information there. We spent four, five, six months, Mike.
Yep.
With the committee on, on that project.
Yeah, it was a good, pretty much from January through June, working with them on that, the development of that. They worked really hard and gave it a lot of thorough thought.
Do you want to then jump in about, uh, anticipated?
So as Mark mentioned, we're primarily focused on the general fund. At the study session on September tenth, you're going to hear more about the capital improvement. Um, plan, which really focuses a lot around the enterprise fundies. So the general fund revenue. Quite honestly, you see it in the monthly report. It just doesn't vary a lot. Um, there's a, you know, a couple of increases that happen. One of them is the property tax, um, one percent increase. That's just to give you an idea in the general fund. It's not more than forty thousand dollars. So it's just not an increase that keeps up with our costs. Um, when you look at the general fund revenue at just over fifteen million dollars, um, I'll tell you, I'm pretty conservative in where I make increase. Um, I'll tell you, I'm pretty conservative in where I make increases, but there aren't that many places to really speculate. One of the places that were still a little bit. I'm sure of is that business and occupation tax revenue. We increased it. Um, but it takes a while for that to come through in the way that all of our businesses report. So I'm trying to make sure that the forecast isn't greater than what we're going to actually realize. My hope is that as twenty twenty-five unfolds, it proves that there's a little bit more capacity in there. But we'll see where that happens. So it's, the revenue budget is at just over fifteen million dollars. As Mark said, when we set up the expenditure budget, finance goes through and applies increases to personnel across all departments. So. Where we're estimating um benefits to increase healthcare, et cetera, and then any kind of salary increase. And we're. Again, pretty modest and uh, um, where we're putting that, but we're estimating. Um, some sort of cost of living, cost of living adjustment plus a step for those employees that are eligible. We take away any one-time expenditures. So where we might have had something that was brought into the twenty-four budget as a one-time. We back that out and then bring everything forward. So we gave no increase for professional services, supplies, et cetera. And as you know, costs are going up, so everybody's living within that means. That brought our expenditure budget at just over fifteen million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So going into the budget, we have a difference where, and I'm. Specifically labeling this ongoing expenditure. So that ongoing expense exceeds our revenue by over a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. So. All of those costs in the general fund as you see. Monthly are for everything from animal control to human resources, city council to everything in between that. So. One of the things we'll talk about is the fact that the general fund contributes to street maintenance and operations. And so. I put that line in there because in order to fund street operations of where it's anticipated right now, just again. Staffing costs and then bringing everything forward, we're going to need to transfer four hundred, pardon me, five hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. To make that happen. That's dedicating all of our transportation benefit district sales tax for the street operations as well. So that means that our general fund, um, expenses exceed revenue by over seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars at this time. So I think what we want to do now is take you through some of the requests because I've given um. A rather bleak picture on that, but we know there are more requests out there and we need to take a look at those because. Uh, Mark and I sat yesterday again looking at the requests. Some of these requests. Really, most of them, quite frankly, aren't, um, well, can we fund those, but some of them are quite frankly, we happen to. Because they're either requests that we um legally have to fund or um. The cost of doing business that aren't included in the budget and we're going to have to pay them one way or the other. So we have two kind of some priorities on this, a priority, one list of requests that's five hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. Staffing requests, the total eight hundred and five thousand. And then we made a priority two. It's not that they're less. Important, but we simply had to try to divide this out and that totals a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So did you want me to highlight some of those or?
Yeah, we can, yeah, show where some of those are.
So these are not by order of importance. It's simply um by how they follow the budget numbering system. So um. Animal control, those um costs are um not adequately budgeted in the twenty twenty-four budget. We're exceeding budget on those. So. We know that we need to add um some cost, some budget to these to just meet where we're at currently. These are, again, an example of where I say we, we put them in an additional budget request over baseline. But. We're spending the money, so it's not really an option at this point. If we continue these services at the level they are now. We need this added in there. You can kind of see down, again, these columns we've divided into priority one, priority two, and then staffing sort of requests. You want me to highlight anything?
You wanna, well, I mean, the, the building inspector, the assistant planner are, are, are. They're, they're really. Intended to meet the, the growth, you know, that's, that's on the horizon. Um, we'll realize revenue obviously with that growth, but we need to be nimble enough that we don't wait until it's already here. Building permits are lagging, um, development is lagging. You should realize the revenue and the growth that we really need. So, um, we're not. Good recommend actually filling those at this point, but. They should be addressed. You need to be, they need to be on our radar.
Uh, we've, we've done a comparison of what it costs us to outsource this work, which we're doing. I mean, well, we are using some, using CoPros to do the building inspector.
Yeah, they're four months behind on the building permits right now. That's why I, I just meant, I just meant. Yeah, well, sorry, uh, I think they take eighty percent of building permit fee. Yeah, good point.
So, so this seventy-four thousand, is this fully loaded or just a salary?
No.
Salary, I mean. I would probably put that a pack in priority one since we're paying eighty percent of the permit fees to third party. That's four months behind.
Well, we can't, we can't fill the building official position. We filled it with an inspector and now Doug's jumping in both feet in October. He's. Uh, going, you know, receive a couple more cert. So we've got a plan at least to. To bring in residential permits and keep that revenue in-house. The commercial permits will still have to go out. And so. We want, we need to work up to that, but hiring building officials right now is essentially impossible. There's, there's something all on the I five core or at. Much higher salary. Um, you'll see some uh contracts on the third of September for three firms. In addition to the CoPros that we're using now to provide some more flexibility uh for getting these permits turned over. Because that time and timeless money for these developers, we want them in, want them out, and want them building right away. The longer they, they sit in a queue. Uh, the, the less benefit there is to us. So, yeah, we're, we're on that. On the planning side of things, we've seen that with the compensation plan. Those planners doing long-range planning, the same ones doing local planning and day-to-day planning. And they're just. They're just not enough available out there, same as continuing services. It's, it's a difficult fill. Um, the point five admin assistant position, we currently have. Currently have admin support. Um, one admin support position split between public works and the clerk's office. It's a burden on both departments. And so obviously addressing, addressing a need there to increase admin support, provide additional services again. If uh, if Donna is on vacation, God forbid, you know, we need, we need some support backup. Uh, the compensation study is a, is a um wage and benefit study. Uh, we're seeing. Recruitments all across the state and these recruiters quite often from um. Recruitment firms that are hired and they're going back out with a higher salary, higher wage classification. That's what our staff see. That's what the market is. We need to determine what that is with our comparables. We can't compete with. The I five necessarily, but we need to know what that is. And frankly. Our, our staff, even if we can't compensate them to this, um, we need to understand uh where that is and where it may go in the future. We, that hasn't been done in many, many years. We do that compensation studying comparables with our unions quite a bit, but we don't go full with our non-represented staff. Uh, the eight thousand dollar election costs um are the potential for um. TBD. Uh, if the council so elected to put the transportation benefit district on the ballot in twenty twenty-five, that's our, our anticipated costs. Uh, on the second page, you'll see some grant writer services on priority two. Uh, there's things like the oil changes in the, in the elevators in city facilities, forty thousand dollars. We have to do it. It's, it's a requirement of L and I that. Put in form these, these maintenance functions. Uh, we've got some. HVAC units that uh are failing in the, in the museum. Again, again, an asset of ours that. Um, provides a critical public service, but it's, it's not. Um, it's not necessarily, it's a city asset, but we're not functioning out of there. Um, we've got an HVAC unit in the animal shelter. It's not, it's not air-conditioned back in the kennels. So. Gets really hot. Gets really hot back there. Um, automatic doors for police and courtroom. Those aren't ADA accessible. Uh, so the entry store you see out here, you have to pull it open. It's not accessible. So retrofitting those with automatic openers. Uh, we have a full phone system in here. We'd like to address replacing that with um. But as a phone over IP or, or some other system like that. Computer replacements. Many of our computers were, especially laptops were purchased at the start of the COVID pandemic. To address work from home issues. I think the recommended replacement is about five years.
Some of our windows will be out of.
Windows next, it's out of life. So we're getting close to that. Um. Windows licensing, cybersecurity infrastructure again needed. Mike can talk about IT a little more succinctly than I can, but there's, there's needed services that um. That we just can't do without. Um, Smarsh revised signature three sixty-five. Smarsh is our um. Is our platform that records um text messages, social media platforms and retains that for public records purposes. Um, you'll see things on here like procurement software for fifteen hundred bucks or new chat printer for thirty-five. Now, we might say. Just go do those this year and that, that'd be nice. There might be some savings this year. We're not done with the budget. We need to have our priority services um. Supply this year. If we have, if we have some in fund balance this year, we certainly would make those purchases. But this. The level of these requests just kind of shows you um the necessity that's been demonstrated from our departments. Um. Let's see. Uh, I think one other one that I want to point out, uh, finance at the bottom page of B and O limited term analyst. Uh, we talked about when the B and O tax was changed last year about reconciling. Who's paying that, you know, tax? Are they paying right amount? Are those businesses that aren't paying? Do we have equity across all businesses? Are the ones that are honest and the ones that might not be paying? Or they just don't know, right? Um, that we've missed some, we don't have the business license. How do we reconcile that? How do we have? How do we have equity throughout that? Uh, we talked about hiring maybe a limited term person to come in and do that. Um, we actually have a. Uh, a meeting tomorrow with the company that may come in and write us service um and do it, you know. For whatever cost, but essentially they're set up, they're more efficient. They have a plan, they have a program in place. So we're still exploring opportunities to do that. Would it raise revenue? We're not sure, but we, we want, we want to ensure that um, that this being the B and O tax would be applied to equity across all businesses. Uh, and then the, the other staffing position is a HR technician, somebody to uh assist in human resources and risk management. In municipal court, um, a lot of these are just. Um, bringing budget lines back in line with what was um approved at beginning of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we made some adjustments and cuts at the beginning of twenty-four. Um, so municipal court has just added, asked to add some of these um. Some of these expenses back in. Uh, we'll, we'll see some um. Overtime increases. They have a new software that they have to implement coming this fall, I believe. Uh, and. The. See, administrative courts comes in for a week and helps implement that. And it's basically their long days. So we pay some overtime for people to um. To be doing that, uh, that could run into, into the following year as well. Um, parks now, parks are offset to Sheldon Municipal Park District funds, uh, but they're captured within the expense budget here. Um, just increased costs uh and some park improvements that are included there. Um, the police, the capital purchase is the, is a police vehicle, one police vehicle at seventy-six, two thirteen. Uh, and they move on down. We have the flop cameras, inventory, small equipment. Um, their firearms or sidearms are due for replacement. So that uh. That eighteen thousand is included in there. They have additional training requirements that need to be updated. Um, the SWAT line item is adding another officer and to. Uh, the county SWAT program. And it's an opportunity to, for further training, uh, another officer. We have an officer within the SWAT program. Um, I believe it serves also as a retention um opportunity, you know, if somebody's interested in SWAT and they. They have that opportunity to move into it here uh at the city of Shelton or move on to another department where they could get that opportunity. Hopefully they stay here and take advantage of that. Um. Uniform invest, but we've been lucky enough in the past to receive some grant funds for that, offset that, but. It's certainly uh, certainly something that's, that is, uh, that we need to provide to them. Um, in engineering, construction inspector is important, particularly when we subdivisions start kicking off. We're, we're looking at, uh, you know, grades and utilities going in the ground and streets going in and sidewalks going and all of those things that uh. That are done before the houses are actually built. They meet city standards and they're going to function, how can they impact the city long-term? Because we. Acquire that infrastructure after it's, after it's complete. So we want to make sure it's, it's built to our standards. So. Um, there's construction inspector included within there. Then you'll see um the lease uh for vehicles. Those are um. Those are what we anticipate if we move to a fleet management program like Enterprise. Really quickly to those requests, Mike, did you have any else you? That might be pointed out that I skipped over?
Okay, gives you a sense for the kinds of essentials really that departments are requesting. It's pretty basic. Could be the worst kinds of requests, I think.
Yeah.
So those are the totals that put in there. Great. So I think we want to move now to talk a little bit about the ending fund balance that we've. Alluded to, I think I talked about it in most monthly financial report. Um, presentations. It, it looks like it's a. Fairly decent amount of money. But when you really start to break it down and think about what we have to spend on, it goes pretty quickly. Um, I also want to say we don't have to spend it all. There's no um requirement that we do. We've met our um council statutory set aside, which is that twenty percent of part of your expenditure. So. That set aside and then this amount exists. But as you can tell, we don't have. Enough revenue um coming in next year to meet our expenditure. So. We've worked um hard to develop a plan for this money because. We need to plan for how we're going to spend it or allocate it at some level. And so that's what this effort is. Again, we came up with the first priority list and the second priority list because the list totals more than what the ending fund balance has in it. We're, um, I think I have a, a breakdown on this next page that maybe I should start, start with a little bit just to. Take you through it. So our projected general fund ending balance is just over five. Excuse me, point nine million. So you back out the three point. Three million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, fifty-four dollars, which is that reserved amount we need to set aside. And that leaves us with two point eight million dollars. To allocate, if you will, wherever we might. So I'm taking out, as you know, the city has received opioid settlement dollars. That's sitting in the general fund right now that has a specific purpose that it has to be spent for. So we want to make sure that's segregated because we have an obligation to spend it. In the um direction that the settlement guides us toward. So that's just over a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. And we call these um proposed strategic efficiency funding options for that ending fund um unreserved balance. So. Um, if you take the option number one, um, and then we took the variance for twenty twenty-five out of that. Brings it down to just um five hundred and eight thousand dollars left in there. And I think we want to be cautious to tell you if we're funding that variance out of the ending fund balance. The ending fund balance is one-time money. It's not ongoing revenue. That's why I distinguish that ongoing revenue, ongoing expenditure. The ending fund balance is one time money, it's not ongoing revenue, that's why I distinguish that ongoing revenue, ongoing expenditures, so. That's the challenge that we all face is we have increased ongoing expenditures that our revenue needs, so. I'll scroll back up so we can talk a little about this mark.
Yeah.
Where the place, um, where our first priority.
Yeah, and, and we can be, well, one could be prospective with some of the development on the horizon, if, if truly. Hundred ninety-nine houses going through grading right now, um. Infrastructure improvements through the winter and going vertical next year, great, I mean, that, that adds revenue to us. Um, as Mike said, we want to, we want to face this budget with caution. We don't want to end up, what we're, we're pulling back on the reins a little, but we'd much rather go in. And if we have additional revenue, we're adding to services we provide into our community that are services, so. Again, this is, this is. Approach cautiously, but again, um, reducing staff um, at a, at any level right now, I think would. Would reduce the services significantly that we're providing, we're providing to our community, so. Maintaining public safety, um, maintaining our infrastructure and um. Being proactive with, with development, investment in our community or our priorities. Uh, the first line item here, you see transferring four hundred thousand dollars to maintain staffing levels in, in twenty twenty-five. Um, would be essentially the top priority in my, again. We're open to feedback here, uh, throughout the evening. Um, the enterprise vehicle fund, um, the one thing enterprise does is it provides you a lower initial payment. You're, you're paying essentially a. And then leases for these vehicles over time, it could be five years for an F-one-fifty pickup, it could be a little longer for a. Police vehicle, the issue is, we don't want to commit to four police vehicles in twenty twenty-five. At a cost of about a hundred thousand dollars and get to twenty twenty-seven and not have the revenue to pay those, those lease payments again, and then we're cutting something else. Because we've committed to making these payments on these vehicles, so. We know we need police vehicles, we know we've got police vehicles, we're spending, you know. Close to fifty thousand dollars annually on, on maintenance and repairs on these things, we could lower that. Potentially see some savings depending on how many police vehicles are purchased, um, also, um. It's, it's about response, it's about, I think, employee retention as well at the same time, yes. Decent police vehicle or if you have a piece of junk and your neighboring entity has a nice vehicle and. You can go over there and, and drive that one, you know, you might be more inclined to, to move to that jurisdiction, so. Um, the five hundred thousand is, is set aside to maintain the ability to purchase. Um, vehicles through a fleet management program, there's also more efficiencies with the fleet management program, they do the purchasing. Uh, they do the outfitting, uh, they do the uh. Surplusing and sale of those vehicles as well, maintenance licensing, they schedule maintenance as well. Um, they have ASC certified, um, staff that can essentially argue on your behalf with garages potentially. Um, but also, we, right now, it's up to the department to go through the purchasing of these vehicles, finance department. Um, then licenses these vehicles, uh, once they're surplus, the finance department, again, takes a vehicle up. Not necessarily off the surplus or off, off of our infrastructure asset list, but manages those, uh, and to get. Uh, to arrange those to get out of the state surplus list, they go over to Tom Water, they get sold off, they tell us. When they're sold, they take them off the list again, it's just, it's just a little more work and create a little more, uh, some more efficiencies, if you will. Um, we've looked at what this, you know, internally, what the replacement would be, like I said, seventy-six thousand dollars for. One, one police vehicle next year. I think this year we bought one that's close, really close to eighty, once you outfitted it, um, and it's somewhere right about for. Four vehicles next year. Rent it a hundred thousand dollars on police vehicles, so, and again, you don't have to. Go all the way in with four vehicles, but those are some, one of the options that we're looking at to maintain. Maintain a fleet that uh, has aged over time and we bought several used police vehicles over. Several years too, seventy or eighty thousand miles from one jurisdiction becomes a new vehicle for the city of Shelton.
That's a, that's a one time expensive five hundred thousand, that's not, that's ongoing, there's lease payments.
Correct, there's lease payments, we hope to budget those lease payments in annual budget, that, that's set aside for the future if we get into a situation. Where those lease payments are hard to make, and so we've got a fund that's set aside for that now, if we make it three, four years down the road. We have some residential development, commercial development and, you know, and our revenue, our, but our. General fund revenue increases and we can maintain those uh, those lease payments, that's great, this can be allocated someplace else, but. I don't want to cut some services to maintain a fleet.
And I think really we're trying to plan for the future so that we're not handing this off to future. Managers, generations, councils and saying, well, we started it, good luck with it, we're trying to really say, here's. You know, we've looked at enterprise really closely, Mason County uses it, they speak very highly of it, they're very happy with it. So we're not concerned about the program, it's just making sure we pay for it.
So it's, it's a protected line item that's going to be in the budget for the next several years. Regardless of, of other councils that want to pull from it, we, I mean, would it be protected?
Well, the council has discretion, um, it's, it's staff's job to communicate what, what the implications are. Um, secure parking lot underneath that, the, the um, costs over um, what the, what the grant has um. Has provided to complete that project. We are nearing the finish line, at least to go out to bid on that, so that's anticipated additional costs. Um, to finish that project, I, I will caveat this is, um, we've done a little more research about. Re, let's say excess tax funding and how that can be applied to some projects and we may have the ability to apply that to a couple of these projects and we leave the general fund of. Uh, of um, of some of these projects. Civic center duct cleaning, that's a, that's a healthy work environment, hasn't been done in twenty-five years, we do regular um, filter. Replacement with all of our HVAC units, but getting in actually clean out some of the duct work is warranted, um. We have an alarm paneling here that's twenty-five years old, it's into life, it's ready to, ready to. Quit on us and we'll have to do it, if we're not proactive, we'll have to be reactive and, and change that out much as we were at the, at the library last, last year. And we're running on me, yeah, last year. Again, some library duct cleaning on a, on the um, on the um. HVAC units there, wastewater treatment, duct clean, that would actually not come out of general, that would be, that would be um, something that would be um. Paid for out of the utility. Uh, again, you see the phone system again over in priority two, um, we just didn't put it up there. We feel like that's one of the things we'll just, we'll limp along, we don't have full sale failures at this point, but. Again, it's, it's uh, if it happens, we're going to have to address it, I'd much rather be proactive with retaining some of these assets, but. Uh, we'll live that along as much as we can, um, we've, you had a study session on emergency management, we need to put some skin in the game, if you will. We need to really develop our um, our coop, uh, we need to put some uh, more work in. Into how we're going to address emergency management in this community and uh, be prepared for when the time comes, so. Uh, there's some resources that are needed to put towards that. Uh, we need to clean our carpets, amazingly enough, um, sounds pretty simple. Uh, but again, our facilities budget, uh, as that's a one time cost rather, we have a budget as an ongoing cost, it's included in this. In this list, um, we have some grant funding for access control for uh, doors and gates and uh, cameras. Uh, it's a direct appropriation from the state, um, it's, we estimated that to be around five hundred thousand dollars to fully implement throughout the city, we got two hundred and fifty. Uh, we wanted to throw a little more at that, uh, but at this point, we'll, I'm, we're recommending we just wait. Get the two hundred and fifty spent, get this thing implemented, see what our actual needs are and then we can, we can implement these as, as time goes on. Um, there's the records retention and. Um, system, electronic records retention system at a hundred and fifty, uh, library deck, it's a tough one, um. We went out to bid recently, received no bids on this project, so this is replacement of the waterproof membrane railings on the deck. Would allow public access, actually the main deck and the two side entry side decks. Um, we got no bids, so great, we can go out and solicit, solicit bids, um. We haven't had many contractors interested in that, we've got a couple bids, they're really close. In price to each other, but it, it takes about another hundred thousand dollars to complete the project. We could wait, we lose buying power on the seventy thousand dollar grant that we have. Um, or we can move forward and put some more funds to it, um, we lose buying power and we see further degradation of the debt, debt system underneath, so. Um, at this point, my recommendation is, and again, that's probably, I think that's something we can potentially fund to read as well. So we have fund balance within the refund. Uh, and then you see everything else um, on the side, the seismic study for our buildings, um. That kind of follows along with emergency management, scanning documents, we've got file cabinets and file cabinets full of. Our copies and documents, so scanning those into a system that manages that adds, adds room uh, to our building, if we ever need to add staff. We're not, you know, first and foremost utilizing the space that we have rather than going someplace else. Uh, and, you know, and maintaining services in one location by getting rid of these hard copies, uh, getting them. Out there, uh, creative district funding, I think, uh, there will be an LTAP application to continue that, so. Um, so that's why that's kind of on the second priority and the others are recreational, you know, the, the playground neon park, I wish the S N P. Could support the full scale replacement of that, it is twenty. He's old or so now, you know, twenty year lifespan, so we're limping along, we're going to seal it here in a. Another week, week and a half, uh, again, to keep the water intrusion out of that wood structure, but they just don't last forever in the northwest, so. Um, it's, you know, it's our, it's our signature community park, we need to dedicate some resources and replace that. Um, talked about civic center storefront, the front doors, uh, uh, kind of a side entrance into the courtroom, so they could separate out. Court functions from the main civic center, um. Lessened security measures that they have to take as well, again, kind of on the back burner, um. We've talked a lot about the, the new public works yard shop. Again, kind of goes along with emergency management, we're at the foot of the hill there, we've got old structures, again, and seismic study. Old structures there, we've, um, we've got some property up on the north side of town that could be utilized for a function like this, it's just how you had. How do you fund it, how do you, how do you implement that? Um, if we get, you know, Cascadia earthquake, um, at the foot of that hill, the fear is that that. That those operations essentially cease if, if all of our equipment is still down there. Uh, we've got equipment, people split up amongst treatment plants and doubt, doubt that's existing shop. Um, this is also a, a way to um, address um, the police department's evidence storage. Right now, again, that's scattered throughout the city, containers, un- unsecure. Shouldn't say unsecure, less than optimal security at some of these locations, um, but uh. Uh, we have the need to maintain uh, some evidence. Many, many years if they're capital, if they're capital crimes, uh, it's through the life of any appeals process, so. We have a few vehicles in storage containers and maintaining those for some time, so. You know, we've got it in this building, we've got it down the dog pound, we've got the wastewater treatment plant, it'd be nice to consolidate those, have a system where we can manage. Uh, that evidence a long term. Uh, the last one on the list is creating a dais for, for the council, um, so the seven council members could. Sit at a dais rather than tables on the floor, um, create space for all staff to present from, from tables. Have adequate audio visual systems and things like that and meet court's needs, but again. I think I've, I've heard from council previously, I'm keeping that on the list just because it was of interest, but I'm, but heard from council previously that. That's, you know, that hasn't risen to the top of the list by any means, so. That sums up what we're, you know, what we entail in, in that uh, that under your general fund balance. And potential projects.
So, we've given you a presentation on kind of where the general fund has this variance. I think at this point, we're looking for. Comments, questions and directions from you all on, you know, what do we do? Do, you know, we've got a variance, as we've said, of just over seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we know. Um, we met with our um, subcommittee that are three members of this body, um, but we're looking at. Some comments that they made and really, you know. If we can try to continue everything as we're doing today, that's the cost, but is it sustainable and what do we look at to. Make sure that the general fund can do all this going into the future.
Yeah, maybe I'll leave him some of the comments from the subcommittee if you mind, those will kind of be starting points, uh, we'll go back to the shop, um. There was consensus that that's a need, it's just how we pay for it, um, incrementally. Um, we've set some money aside through our utility accounts and the general fund to maybe address this, so you could do some grading, some. Fencing improvements, start with that and then look further down the road. Okay, listen to. Ballpark has been running up. So, yeah, it doesn't happen overnight, certainly, um, but we, we could address that over time, um. It's, it's maintaining, you know, some of the other priorities with those, with, with that project, meaning at the same. Is, you know. Are the decisions, um, we talked about animal control, uh, certainly looking for partners, I reached out to Mark Mary at the county. Again, asked if they'd be interested in a partnership there, um, I haven't heard back, so we'll see if, if something comes from them.
What happened in great meeting, they are over to discussion, now that they're doing their budget now.
Yeah.
Which is probably a good time, if you want to set up a meeting, I could probably get that.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
I'd like to see if we can get that.
About two weeks ago, so. Yeah, at this point, I think we had nine dogs in today, um, we have twelve kennel spaces, um. How can we meet needs throughout, throughout the community, but, and if there's options there, you know, essentially if we have one or two dogs. You've got, oh, you have to have somebody there, you have to have somebody to feed them, you have to, you know, you're providing vet carrier. Um, and we, we have a robust animal control program, which is what, um, we're providing now and doing investigations. Um, you, you that, you need that other staff that's in there on weekends and evenings and mornings, um, to feed the animals, clean the kennels. Uh, make sure they're being cared for, uh, a dog just thrown in the kennel and kept there for six months isn't adoptable, right? Uh, just isn't, um, those are some of the tough decisions we have to make though, how long do you maintain an animal in the, in the animal shelter? Um, without moving on from that, what is the, the community's appetite for uh, incurring those costs long term? Uh, there's an article in the Olympian just about a week ago, specifically about Thompson County Animal Patrol, and they were exactly in the same boat. They're at capacity, they're using some foster programs, but the, the animals just aren't moving what they were before and they're incurring. Increasing cost, vet costs are increasing, we have had some luck working with um, inside of Mason County. Uh, which is great, um, and some vet services, uh, scheduling that, striving an animal to welfare. You know, driving back and flipping, getting that and taking somebody off the streets here, um, to do that at the same time, it's, you know. It's all an impact on services, so.
Well, it is, is absolutely wonderful that we do have this two point eight million dollars to, to use to balance tw- twenty-five. And keep services as is. Um, yes, twenty-six is going to be a different story probably, um, we'll probably have to start addressing that this, this coming year as well. Um, but I'm, I'm okay with the priority list number one, I'm also would like to add that patrol officer, if we can move that back over to priority one. And we can worry about the lieutenant maybe in another year, uh, maybe twenty-six if things get a little bit better, but, I mean. We're, we're not here to make money or make a profit, so we have this two point eight million dollars, one, we call one time money, and, and yes, we're going to use it. I'd rather use it for big projects, but unfortunately, uh, we have, you know, pay staffs, you know, and the enterprise funds make sense and. Um, man, it's a bit of a, yeah, I'm here. I think it was four, but yes, so, I mean, it's there to use, I, you know, it, it would be nice if it was a, for, for a big project, but. Um, unfortunately, it's not in the cards this year, so I think we should use it to maintain services as is and, and. And go with all priority one list.
And look at, and look at public safety as well.
Yes, okay, yeah, I'd like to move that patrol officer, I think we need a patrol officer on, on the streets. Using this quality as much as we do, you know, when you got two, one's got to leave and then. You know, when you got two, one's gotta leave and then one's by themselves, so.
Yeah, we're hoping, um, we should have an officer off field training here. Fairly soon and then, uh, we've got a new entry level that's at me right now. That certainly starts. It, it starts us in the right direction, uh, but uh, there's still some time for Officer Green to be on the streets, so.
Right? I wanted to make, make sure that we maintain our staff levels. Um, it's really a. It's really deleterious when we lose a staff member, then you have to replace them, we lose no, any chance of momentum of, of growing. Um, or replacing that staff member, especially considering we are a smaller entity and we can't really compete with the. All surrounding municipalities pay higher wages. So if we were to lose somebody, it's, it's a long term loss. And it's, it'll hinder any chances of getting momentum back to, um, growing again. Um, additionally, um, if we do hire in the future, I think someone like a grant writer. Makes sense to bring in more money, so we can get a return on our investment. When we do more hiring, someone to look after, especially looking after our B and O taxes as well, someone in that. Someone that can bring in revenue would be a big boon. If there's nowhere we can be found, then basically we, we look at it. Um, but I want to make sure that we, um, keep our staff here and happy and working and that's. Part of good government is we're governing up to people by the people for the people. And we, our, most of our tops are staffing, so that's really true. That's, we, we are governed of people and not necessarily things, like, we can get, keep a good staff of people, that's the most important thing we can do.
I think succession planning is, when you lose, when you lose staff right now, and you don't have the succession planning in place, yeah, you, you have a large gap. In providing that service, so you're bringing in somebody. After fact, getting them trained, hopefully to provide that service and that takes some time, there's not that succession planning.
And institutional knowledge as well. Um, someone that brings their experience, someone like yourself who brings thirty years of partnership experience into this position. Any of the staff that's been here for a certain number of years have developed like this, this is what Shelton wants to need, and I think that's a really good experience to have. Rather than trying to recreate. Something that was lost. Once again, I think we can keep our staff and.
Institutional knowledge can be a burden, believe me.
Not in place formally at this, at this time, we have, we had an intern in the planning department over the summer, an intern starting in police department. Soon, yeah, yeah, uh, beginning of September, I talked to, um. The guidance counselor at Cedar High School last week. Um, because they still have culminating projects at, at Cedar High School, which I think Chelmsford, well, Chelmsford High School at least, kind of. Think that were those several years ago, which, which were great, and at least that, it wasn't long term, it wasn't. Short term, but it was, you know, at least you could engage with. Somebody that may want to pursue that career path and take, take an interest in municipal government, some function municipal government, so I'm hoping. There's some fruit to bear, um, from that relationship, that is something that absolutely. It, it, it takes interns, interns take time, you know, you have to manage them, um, take time, because they're coming in. Really with no work experience at all, so you have to have the ability to, to manage those individuals and there, there is some costs associated with your paying L I.
Yeah, there actually, there is, like, just like he's actually looking at this program at schools right now, he actually called us last week. But it's early. Don't know the details yet.
Yeah.
I've got a couple of questions, um, you had mentioned the, um, library deck, but. You may be able to use the, um, re-tax for that. Um, is there a possibility of like the duck cleaning or anything else falling into that category, or do you think it would just be the deck?
Yeah, it's so. There's, there's a distinguish between maintenance and, um. What's the term, I, I think, uh, improvements or something? You can replace an HVAC unit, but you can't initially go in and. Yeah, exactly, so, so maybe some HVAC replacement, the deck replacement, uh, things like, uh, like the, like the fencing project over here would fall into. Those, those types of projects, potentially even we, we have eighty thousand dollars budgeted right now for. The replacement, the uninterrupted, uninterrupted power supply system here in the civic center, it's the bridge between. Uh, the power going out, the generator. Uh, battery system, again, twenty five years old, uh, and we've budgeted that out of the general fund already, it's in our capital improvement fund. Um, and potentially shifting some, some refunds of that, bringing that up too, so, um. We're gonna do a little more work there.
Maybe the fire alarm panel.
And maybe the fire alarm panel too, we, yeah, a little more research on that and we haven't. We frankly, in my experience here, haven't used refunds for, for projects such as that, they traditionally, well, RE. Two, I believe, is dedicated to, um. Streets. Yeah.
Pretty dedicated over, towards really specific capital projects.
Yeah, yeah, and RE one is dedicated to the, um, debt service on the fire station.
But there is some additional in there.
Yeah, we have a. Yeah. So if that's a. If that's acceptable, obviously this will be presented. Through budget, or the either supplemental budget or the twenty five budget, if that's acceptable, council will certainly refine. What kind of projects might bring forward.
Any questions? Let everybody else have a chance first, anybody else?
I, I guess just clarifying question, so the enterprise vehicle fund, is that in general just a fund that we want to put together to maintain vehicles? All across the board, or is it, if we choose to go down the route of doing the enterprises?
If we choose to go down the route, yeah, uh, if we, if we just purchase. The way we're purchasing now, we purchased those outright, the, that budgeted and then you don't really need the account moving forward now. Establishing an, uh, equi- what is it, equipment revolving fund, but. Replacement.
E R and R.
E R and R, uh, replacement fund, we had a analysis. Done of that a couple of years ago, and it was, what kind of investment?
Well, it's, it would, they estimated an initial investment of at least five to six hundred thousand dollars, and then it's a transfer of. Somewhere around that annually to try to get it caught up to where we would need to be, and that's not just out of the general fund, that was looking at. Our fleet across the board, but we just, that was a staggering number, none of us. Deny we need to do it, it's just how do we pay for it, we can pay services and staffing levels we have.
And so that's essentially a fleet management, an internal fleet management program, right, so. You, you purchased the vehicles out of E R R fund and then the department pays an annual rental, if you will, of that vehicle. Once, based on its term, so if it's, it's last eight years or ten years, you, you develop a, a rental rate on that vehicle. After the end of the life of that vehicle, eight years or ten years, you have, you have developed, you have.
Saved enough.
Save enough money, um, for the replacement of that vehicle, we don't have that in place now, we purchase a vehicle. As funded through, as allocated through, um, the budget and the council's approval, purchase that vehicle, it's there until.
Wheels fall off.
We do have an E M and R fund for some of our bigger equipment, like the vector truck and the dump trucks, but even at that, it.
Yeah.
Yeah, enterprise wouldn't replace a street sweeper, it's really for your wife, lady. With its vehicles, those sorts of.
Anything else? Uh, Shane or George, anything? Brett Miguel.
Uh, the bone going fun, could we use that for our, our alternative court in any capacity?
Maybe.
We have to look at it.
Or like. Maybe. Oh, for like a. Yeah, maybe, I, I would think you might be able to.
It's, it's, it's specific to, um. Treatment pro- treatment services, education.
Prevention, yeah.
Prevention, um, I can't recite it off the top of my head, but there certainly may be a, uh, segment there.
The judge orders a certain amount of treatment to not be promptly.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, great question, well, um.
And we do have a grant for a, for treatment court, and, uh, we do have, there isn't money left over, I, I understand.
Yeah, so, yeah.
But that's good.
We haven't, you know, we, the initial, um, allocation. But, a couple of years ago, I think.
Started.
The settlement, uh, was transferred to Mason County Public Health, that still hasn't been expended by Mason County Public Health, and they haven't heard a plan. On how that would be expended, so we're holding the money at this point, if there. Is a plan, then, that department that, that helps community come back to the council and, uh. And get approval on how to spend those, we don't have any, we don't have any specific services right now that I felt fit. The criteria for those funds, but there'd be, there may be an option.
Right. So, are you looking for us to?
Well, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I want to talk about, a little bit about transportation benefit district, you saw the eight thousand dollars that was proposed for, um. The, um. Ballot measure, uh, transportation benefit district sunsets in April of twenty six. Um, it is just over seven hundred thousand dollars annually. This supports the street fund, if we had to, is, we're proposing, oh, one point eight. For twenty twenty five, million dollar street fund, does it?
One point five eight six.
One point five eight, so, um, you'd see how that would. Essentially, you know. About sixty percent of the street fund or so, with that, with that, those funds, it can go back to the voters, the community, um, we're. Going to, um. Communicate how those funds are better used right now, um, we've got a project up on Capitol Hill, Fogarty and. A, a, a couple of other streets that are being prepped for paving right now in partnership with the county, um, we need to make sure the community understands. What the benefit is, uh, from those transportation benefit district funds, also be communicating that.
To Roundabout, North Cliff, and Alder Street.
Yeah, there's some.
All that stuff.
Western Gateway, um, so if that's, we need to start planning that essentially now, though. Um, if, once that sunset, it will, if, if. The community approves it, the, the allocation can start to be collected in January, April or July. Uh, and D O R needs seventy days in advance to, um, start collecting that, so. You have to have the ballot measure approved, certified, and then seventy days to, um. Notify D O R for collection, so. If you work backwards, you know, we potentially could, um, have something on the ballot by the end of the year in November and still meet that. What could be April allocation, um, but we certainly have to, have to plan because we have to get a, um. Ordinance passed and to the. Auditor by. Six. Before the election?
I, they had a lot of timelines we're gonna have to meet in order to. Keep that TBD revenue flowing seamlessly next year.
And how many of these projects would we have not have done without that TBD the last ten years? Everything, so.
Right, including maintenance.
Yeah, and, and it, and it's two tenths of one percent, so it's, it's what, two cents for twenty bucks or something like that?
Maintaining a current.
Yeah, so. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm.
So, I, I guess if, at least, you know, at this point, if, if there's kind of a head nod. That we would come back at the study session, provide you more information, some more succinct timelines and. Start working backwards from when the existing TBD sunset, so you've got more information, um. That staff will know better how to proceed, give you the information, whether you're looking forward or not.
Yeah, my head nod.
I'd be curious about more information.
Okay. Um, we, we talked about, um, public safety and mental health and D C R services. I think Councilmember Gutierrez brought up in, in the subcommittee meeting, how important those services are in our community, we're currently. Funded through a grant through T N B H O, um, we haven't received. Notification that grant's gonna be renewed at this point, so that's one kind of caveat here, uh, about a hundred thousand dollar expense, if that isn't provided. Um, I have heard from our first responders, public safety, uh, council members, um. Individuals in the public, how important that service is, I want to maintain that service, I've heard. Councilmember Gutierrez said if we have the resources to expand that service, um, that we should, we should look into that too. Uh, there may be some opportunities apart from the county, or some other providers, um, as well, um, to, uh. To expand upon that service in our community, because it's not, it's not provided, you know, twenty four seven, right, uh, there's not much time for the one D C R we have. House, so.
I also think this should be prioritized in front of patrol officers, because if you got a patrol officer, they would not be able to admit that we don't have D C R. So, um, D C R should be the first priority before actually the patrol officer.
Oh, absolutely, we need to support the D C R program, it's been a huge success. And you hear nothing but good things, even from the sheriff's department, which, so if the, it wasn't being funded by grant. Definitely the county should be pitching in some money for a D C R, because their coresponders call our D C R, so, um. For commitment, so they definitely should be pitching a little bit, but we, I'm hopeful that we'll get another.
I'm hopeful, excuse me, I, I guess I didn't. Um, tell you the rest of the story, T N B H O believes they will have. Yes. I want to see it, you know, and, you know. Show me the money from the, from Jerry McGuire, showing the money first and a commitment, that's. You know, we want to be, we want to be strategic with this budget and conservative with this budget until we see those funds, we see a commitment, I believe. You know, ninety percent is gonna be there, but I want to see it before we actually make that commitment. Um, I'll reach out, back out to T N B H O and see if they have opportunities to expand that service, whether it's. Full time, part time, or within other partnerships in the county as well. Um, I know those, those resources are, um. Are being utilized more and more throughout our entire region, you know, and the need for, uh, mental health professionals. Is great, um, so I don't know how to be, I don't, what the opportunity is out there, but. We can certainly ask and see what, see what kind of, um. Um, abatement, um. Like I said, we, we allocated eighty thousand dollars for abatement this year, the, the cleanup, the two cleanup events come out of that and then. We've, we've obviously had the one palace that's been demolished, we saw, we hope to see a lien from a. Property back in twenty thirteen that we, we had paid it. Or now, we received, uh, lien money this year from a house on E Street, so. Um, some revenue coming back in the general fund based on those and hopefully as. The housing market increases and property values are, are up, that people want these properties once they go to the best tax foreclosure, so.
When, when we get bait money back, can, can we just stick it back into abatement automatically, or does it go to the general fund and then the council down the road has to allocate it back towards? Um, abatement, I think it should go right back into the abatement fund and. Then well, you know.
You don't really have a fund. Okay, just line up in the general.
It's lining into the community development.
Because I hear that they got an auction off this property down here in railroad, so that's gonna go back, what, twenty five thousand dollars?
Over thirty thousand dollars, yeah, yeah, absolutely, so code enforcement and abatement is funded out of the general fund, so it essentially, without having a dedicated. Fund, it essentially supports it already, absolutely, um, unfortunately, and the more we evade, fortunately or unfortunately. More revenue that may come in the general fund, we, we'd much rather be more proactive in our code enforcement, so the houses don't get to that condition. Right, and we have to go in and pay it, because it's a heck of a lot more expensive and there's a lot more impact to our community and neighbors. When they end up in a condition like that, fourteen level property, so be more proactive upfront. Trying to get voluntary compliance, um, and just, for lack of a better term, bulldogging it, you know. A lot of these properties, you just, it's multiple, multiple contexts, whether it's absentee owners or. You don't even know who the owner is, in the case of the river of property. So back to, to the library and museum, um, I think I heard from the subcommittee at least. The subcommittee at least to have a conversation with Timberland Regional Library to see what the opportunities are, I'll tell you that um our agreement with Timberland isn't any different than. The cities and the counties within their district, um they're providing, they're providing facilities, um custodial maintenance services, uh utilities at the same time. Again, that doesn't mean we can't have that discussion to see what kind of uh. Opportunities may, may present itself for some relief of uh. Of our uh, of our uh. Our expenditures for that building. Yeah.
Oh, I'm absolutely look, uh, look, or would like to look at for contracts, we should be providing. Uh custodial service where we can't even have enough custodians here in the city, so I think they can, you know, we give them building, we're, you know, we're, you know, paying the life bill. And the water and sewer, I think they can, they can clean their own, their own bathrooms, I mean. They're, they have their own funds, their own tax, their own taxing, so I'm, I'm not sure why we're cleaning their bathrooms for them.
Right. No, yeah, right, absolutely, I mean, we can have that discussion, obviously libraries are critical. To a community, provide critical services, we want to be good partners with them because it brings people into our community, they, they, you know. They visit businesses, um they participate in, in activities in our, in our community at the same time, we have to be creative on how we're providing all of our services and that, if that's in. Public safety and streets, I think that it boils over into, into library services at the same time, now we've reduced some of our maintenance within the landscaping. As you've seen, we've been lucky enough to get some grant money and do some repairs outside, the library has, T R L has committed to um. Renovating the public restrooms. Last year, they made some improvements eh as well inside some paint and flooring and things like that, we certainly weren't able to do. But that ongoing day to day maintenance, that, that can't be a burden for us, and we've reduced our service, we've reduced our custodial staff. Um, moving on to the museum, um. We briefly had a discussion last year when the museum, historical society, and these kind of historical society approached the council for approval of um. Uh, a, a longer term lease when they were gonna apply for the grant for expansion, uh it's one thing, I started that conversation about at least paying for utility services and things like that with this sort of study. That lease agreement expires in a little over a year, um so we're at least gonna have to explore that, that lease before long, but it's probably worth. Starting that conversation now and whether they have long term plans of staying in that building and maybe receiving ownership. Potentially, or um how maybe um they could, that building can serve their needs and maybe relieve the burden on, on the city's uh general fund at the same time.
For fish more cap.
Okay. Going down my list. Uh, fire district annexation, again, um this is probably a longer term discussion. Um, it essentially doesn't change services in the city, the fire district provides, Central Mason Fire provides the same services, um what it does is it changes tax collection, so. The Central Mason would, if, if the annex, annexation was voted on in favor by city residents, as well as everybody in the current Central Mason District. Um, then they would be the taxing authority within the city of Shelton, it would relieve the city's burden of paying out of our general fund for, for fire services. Um, the city could do several things, right, because you don't have that burden on the general fund anymore. You can reduce your tax collection, you can change it to a certain amount for whatever services, but those are the kind of decisions I've made, or you can reduce it completely, so. Um, that, you know, it's, it's essentially a, a, a net zero for the, for the rate payers, taxpayers, um. In some communities, they have kept a portion of that for, for services in the city, but you have to communicate that with your public, have to. Fully inform them of what that decision is, see what kind of uh support you might have, so.
Will we still pay fire marshal services in annexation?
Yep, as well as ownership of the, the fire station, and then right now, our agreement is that we pay half of equipment. Half of their cost of equipment in the city too, so that reduces that burden long term.
What, two fire trucks in the last few years?
There's a ladder truck that just purchased this year, yeah, exactly right, so. Um, we're fortunate enough to have a great relationship with Central Mason, um and they're taking payments on that ladder truck, not, not one time. Uh, a one time payment, they're taking payments over, over a number of years, um and what we, I think that, you know. Frankly, once, once the city decided to contract those services, there's no going back, right, so. It's not like we're gonna go start a fires department anytime soon, make that investment, uh so we need to maintain that relationship and have every, you know. There's no reason to think that we won't maintain that relationship, but is it more efficient um and, and more um. There's more clarity in Central Mason just providing that service and annexing the city of Shelton. Um, upfront, rather than having kind of the past difference in the city. That's, I think that's ultimately the discussion.
Take some pressure off staff here too.
A little bit, I mean, it's. Yeah.
Sure, one last thing you gotta count, Mike.
There you go.
Yeah. Um, we talked a little about. Uh, affordable housing sales tax, one of the, one of the sales tax is available to the city specifically for affordable housing um. Programs, this can be used in, in many different ways, um. What it needs to be, but the, the housing needs to be de-restricted in some sort or. There's some, there's some very specific requirements that need to be. To meet the R C W, uh it, it potentially gives the city a tool to encourage some affordable housing by, we could offset some development costs, um. As far as G F Cs, um we can put in some infrastructure improvements like frontage improvements or something like that, that are a burden for some of our affordable housing providers, um we could. Save some of the money, you know, use that as incentive for affordable housing provider, um. Commissioners, council member, not commissioner, council member sent me some information today from the Department of Commerce on a chip grant, which is a grant that. Um, can build infrastructure for affordable housing projects, there's up to a million dollars available um for specific grants. Um, to be eligible for those, you have to have that affordable housing sales tax adopted in place.
Uh, be used for mitigation pallet shelter type site?
Potentially.
Operations?
Potentially, yeah. Yeah, a number of things, transitional housing permits supportive housing, um yeah, enough, and really the spectrum of affordable housing, certainly. Um, we would, you know, much like the TBD, um. We do some research, present some opportunities where these funds could be um expended, what we felt like the biggest need is, look at our, some of our affordable housing providers locally, uh regionally. Um, to see what, you know, what the priorities might be in the community, we have a housing needs assessment, the county just finished the updated housing needs assessment that. That shows us that we, the need um for these variable housing uh. Projects and bring something back to the council in the study session to consider further. All right.
Commerce also put out another, just after that one, they said that they have grant for operations and maintenance costs for these housing budgets.
Two more things on my list, if you'll bear with me. Um, we talked a little bit about um capital needs in parks, um and the, the. She'll match one park district is, is just like the general fund at the city of Shelton, we, we collect general tax revenue, um that is limited to the one percent. Um, our expense, our expenses are exceeding our revenue and, and we'll have less and less money to put into uh replacement of, of, of. Equipment or capital, um capital projects, um there's a couple of ways to address that. Right now, our subdivisions are required to provide neighborhood parks, that's great, um when we're talking about trails, water access, community parks, um. Skate parks, splash pads, replacement of playground in the inland park, those are the capital funds that need to be supplanted to hopefully uh provide those, those um. Those community assets, um that can be done through an impact fee on um. On housing starts, um affordable housing starts could be, uh could be eliminated for that or significantly reduced. Um, the way that's calculated is you take C I P, your capital improvement program, determine how many houses you anticipate to be built, um it's just like a general facility charge for water, sewer, it's charged based on. Potentially the size of the house or, or the use, and then that is, that is kept as a, as a, as a fund, that is, that is um. That is spent on, on the capital improvements based on your C I P in the community, um or um potentially a levy that left, the, the. S and P is collecting somewhere just over fifty cents per thousand, right now, they have the ability to collect seventy five cents per thousand, that's a vote of the public. As well to um meet some, some, some of those capital needs.
So a levy lidlet would be on the existing um homes and a impact fee would just be on development, so. Um, I would probably be more interested in impact fee on, on development, uh. For parks, rather than raise some of these property taxes.
Yeah, impact fee, so let me be clear, impact fee um can be established by council, the levy lidlet you have, have to give to people. Yeah, and then, yeah, I mean, these can be certainly mutually exclusive, yeah, absolutely, they're, they're two separate processes, yeah, by all means.
Did you get enough on that one?
Um, would the council consider a presentation at a study session on, on impact fees? At least, at least to learn more about it, okay, great. Yeah, absolutely, good, uh and the last is um homeless services, um we haven't captured this. In a budget previously, this has kind of been absorbed in whatever budget, whether it's parks, whether it's streets, um if it's water facilities. Um, whether we're, we're mitigating some encampments, whether we're just cleaning up garbage, whether it's a, it's a porta potty that's over here in, in the parking lot. I'd like to establish at least a fund, um where we are, we can allocate some funds there, we can track that appropriately to the services we're providing, we also have. Um, within our time sheets, we're, we're tracking that, so we know specifically where we're putting our resources, um and how those are being spent. Um, in the sub, in the subcommittee additional of the restrooms were mentioned as well and discussed a little bit, um we haven't had a, a majority of the council that I think has. Has directed us to go, go on that route, but um we, we need to, we need to, we need to gather some data, we need to know exactly what. What we're spending, how it's being affected, what departments being, what departments are being affected, um it's. Quite often, it's frankly, it's not equitable, the parks department um burden is, bears the burden of the cost at all times, so. It, my thought is it could, should come from the general fund, specifically when you're talking about parks or water facilities or. Our facilities, sewer facilities, places like that, but I'm certainly in discussion.
So you're saying like if we have to go, we're cleaning up poor park. We obviously get mess there from time to time, we would, we would charge that off the general fund rather than. Parks, if we were cleaning up below the tank up on the hill, we'd be using water department or general fund to relieve water department tunnels.
Exactly right.
Well, it makes sense, I guess. Put the cost where, where it needs to be and not burden the, the department set or trying to survive as well on what we give them, so. Uh. Yeah.
Do we have a good accounting of how much we pay in homeless services per year, so basically if we create. This allotment for those, we can say we spent this much money doing these, these sorts of things, and then we can proactively plan what we actually want to do with that money as opposed to just be reactive.
That's the intent, thank you for.
Set up some budget.
I like it.
Yeah. It wouldn't necessarily be a fund, it would be a bunch of money that we can charge.
Yeah, exactly, and we're using existing staff, right, they're, they're here, they're being paid, whether they're in parks or whether the water, water fund at, at this point, but. So we're not hiring the additional staff at this point. Would.
Probably good.
It'd be nice at some point, right, and there's community downtown ambassadors and, and things like that, but it's not the cards at this point, we're using existing staff, but we want. To succinctly track our expenditures there, so we have better data for the council to make more informed decisions.
Well, that is quite, I'm wrong. Because we're doing the cleanups and the different things, that money is being taken from, maybe we could have hypothetically done the, the ground equipment, maybe we would have the money in there, but we had to spend it otherwise.
It, it certainly affects. It certainly affects what we can do uh physically in, in, in maintenance, right, if we're spending whatever, I mean, you know. The elephant in the room is the park, if we're spending two hours, you know, a, a day down there, it's two hours a day, we're not spending someplace else, we're not spending that at the inland park account and park or someplace else. So absolutely, it's deferring this is what it's doing.
On the money that we pay for Dumpy, and for the regular, that money is being used for, you know, new park services and.
Let, let alone public safety, right, because that's, that's someplace we're not tracking at all either.
That's something we didn't use the opening phone quarters really.
I don't know how to succinctly tie it to that, um just because. If we're, if we're cleaning, I, I, let me look at that a little more, I didn't see how we could, because I thought, I, I mean, I mutually thought, well, let's. Let's try to put some of this into our public safety department, right, and I just didn't see under the settlements where that's succinctly tied.
It's a big issue in county health, is one where public health is involved, yeah. I think if we're doing a lot of cleanups and especially have to do fortifies. The, the amount of waste that we could divert from going into the water system or in, down the drain or in our parks. I don't know, we can somehow define. Um, you know, that's part of public health and safety.
That'll be a settlement is very specific on things like education and prevention and things like that, and sort of clean up isn't, doesn't fall under any of those, you just have to be very, very careful. How you use those funds.
That's my list. Bear with me, okay, I'm gonna get you out of here before eight, I think, we'll see.
So did you get a consensus on if we're going to use a two point eight and fund operations as is, with the priority one list? Uh, from us, we, we thought we were going with that, or do you need that information right now?
We need, we need that to move forward, I didn't hear any opposition, so I guess. Please, if, if that's the case, we obviously have a little bit tweaking within these, the priority one requests that you see here. At the one time, so we, we saw what we meant to do, we're gonna have another month or so of, of data. Maybe two months of data, of, of this year's data, that's gonna show, show us a little more to, to base some of these decisions on, but. Um, we're fairly, we're fairly confident where we're at, and we're comfortable in, in these numbers moving forward, um. With the information we have in front of us today.
The thing where our work is cut out for us as department heads is out of this list, what do we find?
That's.
Because that's not included in there.
That's, that's where things are gonna be moved.
Because these are ongoing costs, and so where do we, you know, what do we do in order to keep programs maintained at their current level, given. These requests.
So bake some?
Expensive cookies. We're talking tw- twenty six, so, right, we're talking twenty six, well, under my, my impression that the, if we were to go. We go ahead and use part of the two point eight, like it's planned here. In priority one, and oh, then that gets us through twenty twenty five, but then we gotta start worrying about twenty twenty six, and what we're gonna do there.
Uh, we didn't include these asks.
Right, right.
That are on this. asks that are on this part of the budget right here, so we've also got to say, what of these things are we going to do and you, you know, that's where Mark was mentioning, we can read, allocate some rate money towards some of the capital projects that would free some of that up, but these, I would really call most of these ongoing expenses, these aren't requests from departments really aren't any one time in here.
But we don't have the money for ongoing expenses, so I mean, that's, that's where I'm going.
We're, yes, exactly, we're essentially propping up the twenty five budget, but if, if we funded these ongoing expenses or a portion of them, we're, we're propping up those ongoing expenses with, with in fund balance for one year and then we're reassessing it.
Correct.
We hope we have new revenue streams, yes, am I counting on it? Not going to do that, we're going to prepare.
And we're still going to have that half a million leftover, unreserved money that we should.
Unreserved money.
Just keep it there.
Yep, we hope, you know, at the end of the year, we even budgeting conservatively, we hope to have some unexpended balance at the end of the year.
Can overspend.
Yeah, exactly right.
Be slightly under.
So we hope to be under, we, you know, if if we spent to to the adopted budget every year, it's much easier to plan accordingly. But that isn't the case and things change throughout the year, but with any luck, you have a little bit of unexpended balance that goes into your, you know, your reserve fund, you can use those for one time expenses down the road, but again, I'm not going to count on those for ongoing expenses. No, we're projecting conservatively, especially with the new B N O, yeah, B N O tax increase. Is there an idea of where we're at with our, our realized income from that versus what it would have been if if we just doubled what we saw last year or in that, in that sort of sense, so we can kind of say, this would be the high end, this is where we are and there's this much room in that budget, just to kind of understand.
Sure, do you want maybe at next, at the September monthly financial to delve into that a little bit and show kind of where we're at here today? You know, roughly, we prior to the, with the old percentage, it was about eight hundred thousand dollars. We budgeted this year for about one point three million, so we didn't expect that it would double simply because some of the annual payers, we don't see that money until the following year. I increased it a little more in twenty twenty five, but based on what we've seen, we're just not convinced that it's double.
Yeah, it's not.
You know, that's where we really feel like having this, either an analyst or the company that we're able to talk to come in and take a look at things and say, is there, you know, are we able through our system, we have to generate some letters to business license holders and and balance some of these things, I don't know, that may help us at the very least make businesses aware that we're trying to be equitable, that we care about it. I just, right now, I don't think it'll be doubling.
No, Sierra Pacific told me the other day that even with the increase in B N O, but the cost of lumber is so cheap right now that they're, they're paying less money right now than they were before we doubled it because their retailer, the cost of board is really cheap right now, so.
And we have seen it level out a little bit, we had some trouble with our, a couple of big retailers, they have corporate headquarters outside of the state. They just didn't catch up with it, they are now. And so you saw the June financial report presentation, it's, it's about where we expected budget to be this year, so that's why I'm hesitant to say that it'll be completely doubled.
Right.
As I told Mark, I hope to be wrong on that, that we can add a couple hundred thousand dollars to the budget when we go into twenty twenty six, but I would rather come to you that way than say, oops, we overestimated and we need to now drop revenue back even more, so I, I just want to be realistic about it and that's really kind of where it's coming in at this point.
I, I greatly appreciate that, I was, I was just.
No, I appreciate that, yeah, because we really need to, everybody to understand that because it's, you know, it's.
And I think the simple thing to do is just say, okay, let's double it from the previous year, right? But I appreciate Mike's approach, let's look at it a little more closely and say what's, what's realistic and conservatively, let's, let's look at it more closely and make sure that we're not over projecting because that could, you know, ha- happen.
That's how we give you potential, so it's the best way to come.
Yeah, and I did increase it a bit for modestly for twenty twenty five, because I do anticipate in January, well, that first quarter when we get those payments in, that will, you know, but I also I just want to make sure and I think we'll know a little bit more and we can report back after a meeting with the company we're going to talk to tomorrow afternoon, see what kinds of things they could recommend to us. You know, we really did hear from the past force that they would like us to, you know, the businesses that pay and pay on time, it's it's a fair, matter of fairness and equity that is the city really going out there and saying, okay, you, you sent a return last year, but you didn't this year, are you not doing business in the city, those kinds of things and we still have the staff to do that right now, but you know, how do they expect to compensate for that?
We weren't. And essentially, hopefully, that's kind of a one time exercise, you know, and then we've established you know, a comprehensive list, we understand who may have been, may not have been paying, you know.
And maybe set up some processes that are straightforward for finance to be able to send out through our software that we have some letters, you know, that reconcile some of this, like I said, you know, you have a business license, we noticed you didn't file a business and occupation tax return just to check out some of it, so that those businesses that are know that we're being fair and trying to be equitable.
The, the, the B N O tax is also based on grocery receipts, so you know, our economy also tells us what we're going to get as well, so we had a different economy and people quit buying stuff then, you know, or they're going to Olympia and buying their stuff rather than buying it local, so.
Online shopping.
Well, at least we get sales tax while in shopping, at least, that wasn't always the case, but that's, that's probably states that he's across, across the country during, or during the state during COVID, otherwise cities probably have gone bankrupt all over the place. But do we, are we going to have any new discussions, so we're going to extend this meeting, anybody? Okay, so whenever you're ready, just wanted to make sure we don't have any new discussions. So do we have a new discussion tonight? All right, then this study session is adjourned at seven, seven P M.